Clerk, can you do roll call? We'll open up council first briefly.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin. Currently not here. Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brightagum.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. All right. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember John O'Neal for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, if I could ask everybody to please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear gracious Lord, as we gather here this evening to consider the issues of our community, we ask for your presence in these proceedings. May your hand guide the decisions made here tonight for the benefit of all. Also, as we approach Memorial Day, may we remember and always be grateful for the sacrifice of those who died in service to our great nation. Amen.
Thank you. If you'd all join me in the pledge, this is to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
All righty. With that, we will recess and I'll hand it over to Chair Brightagum to conduct the Housing Authority business.
Thank you. I will call the May 23, 2023, meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dovin.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Brightagum.
Here.
And Commissioner Beckles is absent.
Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the Housing Authority? Not the City Council, but the Housing Authority. Seeing none? Oh, I do have a hand. For the Housing Authority? Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, he just had a comment, so we'll move on to consent. Entertained a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
We have a motion in a second. Call for the vote?
Sorry, Chair Brightagum, we're gonna have to do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Dovin.
Present. Or yes vote.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Brightagum.
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
We'll move on to matters. Does anybody, any matters? I do have one matter pertaining to, I was a keynote speaker last weekend involving housing and the Housing Authority in Westminster. Had about 300 people there. It was a great turnout. I just want to commend staff for getting me up to speed. Prior to that, made me sound like I knew what I was talking about. But no, all kidding aside, you guys prepared a really good report and I want to commend staff for their time on that. And that, the old rusty skeleton, that is, as the comment was made, is coming along and that should be at full occupancy this year, right? So, we're really excited to see that moving along and that'll be a low-income senior when that's done.
Probably 15 years in the making.
Yeah, yeah, so we're glad to progress that along, so. So, no other comments. We will adjourn. The next regular Housing Authority meeting will be Tuesday, June 27, 5:30 PM, Community Meeting Center. And we'll go back to the council.
Awesome. We'll give one second. All right, we will reconvene the City Council and go on to presentations. We do have one community spotlight in recognition of the Garden Grove Community Emergency Resource Team, or CERT volunteers, for their valued service.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started here. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize the Garden Grove Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT volunteers, for their valued service. And so I'd like to ask the CERT volunteers to please come forward. If everybody could please just come up right in front of the dais here, or the kind of wild area. You all just kind of come forward and stand and you can turn and face the public. Okay. We have everybody forward? Okay. So, for over 19 years, the Garden Grove CERT program has provided Garden Grove residents and business owners with knowledge and skills to prepare for, respond to, and recover from a disaster. CERT volunteers are trained in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. All CERT volunteers complete a training academy that uses a nationally-recognized curriculum approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA. In addition to the required training, CERT members are also certified in CPR and first aid. In the event that city emergency services become delayed or overwhelmed due to a catastrophic event or disaster, CERT members can help augment first responders by performing duties such as damage assessments, wellness checks, shelter support, and more. CERT volunteers also assist with numerous community programs and events in the city, including food distributions, city hall docent duties, and support at special events such as National Night Out and the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the CERT Leadership Council provided essential support to the City of Garden Grove Police Department by regulating facilities, administering traffic and pedestrian control, registration and radio communications at local mobile vaccine clinics, and assisting in face mask and meal distributions at the H. Lewis Lake Senior Center. The CERT program continues to provide ongoing skillset training that adapts to the varying needs of the community. Just this year, the CERT program initiated its first-ever active shooter training to properly educate volunteers and community leaders in situational awareness and how to respond when caught in a shooting situation. The CERT program volunteers are a tremendous community resource and an invaluable asset to the Garden Grove Police Department and the City of Garden Grove. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Garden Grove CERT volunteers with certificates in recognition of their valued service. Congratulations.
Yeah, do you guys want to kind of pile in around?
Like a tall people in the back.
They're all fit.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Maybe two rows deep.
We have a coordinator.
Look forward.
Look at the cameras.
Say CERT.
Say CERT.
CERT.
Trade me, I got yours.
Oh, really? Oh, oh, cool. All righty, we will boot back up and move on to oral communications. I do have several cards, starting with Anna Parker.
Hi, thank you very much for the opportunity. I've been here. We are having an issue because we found out that the house was built before the city incorporated it. And then there is a crooked property line. We never used it like that. It's been 60 years that we are using like that. And then, all of a sudden, new neighbors started building. They never left. They never tried to contact us. Hey, this is our number if you're having any issue or contractors. By the time I found out who they were, they asked, how did you find our number? So, it was very hard to find out what was going on, to stop the construction, and the city could not help either. So, we are having to have an issue tomorrow. There's a motion, so we can use the basement to use them over there. Thank you very much for coming over. That was great. So, I would like to suggest that next time, you don't let this happen. So, how? We need to find a solution. So, observe if there is anything going on with the neighbor that is being used in a different way and if the neighbor can contact in case they see that there is something wrong going on. Because now, we cannot even have a wall on our side. You know, there are people walking all the time. They did not leave enough space for us to build a wall. And we hear them and we see them walking by our bedrooms and windows all the time. And they could not make it so bad. But then they put lights in front of our bedrooms. They put another light that goes on and off all night. And the judge told them, do not dig a hole. They went there and they dug a hole. So, it's been a struggle since October 2021. And I would like you to consider arranging something for that not to happen. Because the area is big. It's like a quarter acre. There's no need to build four feet from the wall, you know? There's a huge space in the middle. So, five to six feet would be more than enough at that area. There's no need to be that close or make the windows building your own property so you don't have problems with neighbors and you have everybody respect and privacy considered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, it's good to see you. Most of you were at the college graduates reception this afternoon honoring our college graduates. And it was somewhere in the program, it was remarked that it takes a village to raise a child. And that's why, one reason I'm here is to share the importance of something important that came out. I want to call the audience's attention that back on March 28, I spoke to the City Council and played a clip from the Surgeon General's interview on CNN. Well, it turns out that today, on Good Morning America and on CNN and other news outlets, it's reported, the Surgeon General issues major advisory on social media use and teens' mental health. And this is really important. And so, those of you that are watching this can Google it or go and see what this is. But it's informing the public and the parents. And he's quoted by CNN as saying, the U.S. Surgeon General, Dr. Vivek Murthy, "We're in the middle of a youth mental health crisis and I'm concerned that social media is contributing to the harm that kids are experiencing. For far, for too long, we have placed the entire burden of managing social media on the shoulders of parents and kids, despite the fact that these platforms are designed by some of the most talented engineers and designers in the world to maximize the amount of time that our kids spend on them," he said. "So that it's not a fair fight. It's time for us to have the backs of parents and kids." So, we have to bring awareness and I, you know. So, I have just a short interview that aired on Good Morning America this morning.
Gonna turn to the new warning from the Surgeon General this morning about growing concern around social media and its impact on teens and why he's calling on companies for rigorous health and safety standards. Ariel Resif has more on this. Good morning, Ariel.
Good morning to you, Michael. In that new advisory just released this morning, the Surgeon General is warning Americans that children's minds are still developing, making them even more vulnerable to the harms of social media, though we still don't know the long-term effects. Dr. Vivek Murthy is calling for more research and transparency from social media companies, saying they have so far been barriers to our understanding of the full health impacts. According to the Surgeon General, kids are commonly exposed to inappropriate and harmful content. 95% of teens and 40% of children ages 8 to 12 are using social media. Teens spend an average of three and a half hours a day on these platforms. But the Surgeon General is now warning that those who are on social media, more than three hours per day, face double the risk of experiencing symptoms of depression and anxiety. The Surgeon General says parents should be able to trust that these platforms are safe for their children with similar safeguards like we have for toys and for medicine.
All right, thank you very much. We gotta wrap that one up.
And a reminder that in 2021, Congress pressed companies to do more to prevent the harmful effects of social media.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Mayor Jones, Josh McIntosh had to leave the meeting.
He left?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. We will briefly recess and do successor agency and then San District. So, I'd like to call to order the successor agency. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Member Brightagum.
Here.
Member Tran.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Klumpenstein.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neal.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications, consent items. Just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion? Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
The successor agency matters. Seeing none, we'll adjourn to sanitary district. I'll hand it over to President O'Neal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting to order. If we could please call the roll.
Member Brightagum.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Klumpenstein.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Vice President Tran.
Here.
And President O'Neal.
Here.
Thank you very much. We've already done oral communications simultaneously with council. At this time, we'll go to consent, which is just receive and file the minutes from April 25.
A little bit.
A motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you for that. Any matters from board members? No? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna adjourn this meeting until the next sanitary district meeting on Tuesday, June 27, here in these chambers, 5:30. Back over to council. Thank you.
All right, we'll reconvene City Council. It takes us on to consent items. Recommended that items 3A through 3G be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item for discussion. Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Takes us to public hearings. Item 4A.
Item 4A is adoption of a resolution confirming the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District Advisory Board Report and levying an assessment for fiscal year 2023-24. And Ms. Kim is gonna provide the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I have Jeff assisting us with our PowerPoint this evening. Your economic development team had a delayed flight and so we'll be presenting this public hearing item for you this evening. So, tonight, this is part two of the GG TID approvals. The city will conduct a public hearing to consider levying assessment for the GG TID. The item before you tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the annual report for the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District Advisory Board and declaring intention to levy assessment for fiscal year 2023 through 2024. The annual revenues is approximately 2.5% of self-assessment from the 10 GG TID hotels. The revenue is dispersed in the following manner. 20% will be allocated to GG TID. 80%, I'm sorry, 60% will be allocated to Visit Anaheim and 20% set aside in a city future transit fund. So, Jeff, if you can stay on this particular slide. The GG TID was established 12 years ago and has been a successful revenue resource for the hotels district, bringing new tourism and tourists to Garden Grove. Each year, the hotels have agreed to continue the self-assessment and the hotel continues to see increased success throughout the years in support through the self-assessment in partnership with Visit Anaheim. Representing Visit Anaheim, we do have Jay Burris to share some key performance indicators at the end of my presentation. Next slide, please. So, the purpose of the GG TID is to defray, the purpose of the GG TID is to provide revenue to defray the cost of advertising, marketing efforts designed to increase overnight stays, construction and maintenance of improvements, and other services, activities, and programs along the tourism corridor. This year, GG TID will sponsor the World Korean Business Convention, which is the first in its 20-year history that it will be, arrive in Orange County. Next slide, please. The state of tourism continues to be significantly high with RevPAR, which is up and drives revenue to the City of Garden Grove in both TOT and sales tax. We have attached the GG, next slide, please. We have attached a DGTPC budget for your consideration this evening and I have Jay Burris, CEO of Visit Anaheim, that will highlight just some of the accomplishments this past year as it relates to promotion and branding Garden Grove and the Visit Anaheim corridor.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council and City Manager. Thank you for having me and thank you for your partnership over the last few years, the last, really, 12 years. We've gone through a lot the last three years and we've all kind of come out on the other end. And I think that you've seen some great results in this past year. In 2022, the numbers, visitation numbers actually exceeded 2019 numbers. So, while they weren't the convention group, they were the tourism groups coming in and we saw the rates kind of skyrocket there for a while. They're settling in now, so that revenge tourism is kind of slowing down a little bit. But we're getting the group going again and the international going again, which is part of my presentation. In 2022, we had 45 citywides booked. In 2019, we booked 40, we booked 51. So, we're getting back to that level of bookings in our convention numbers, which is great. It's changed a little bit in that now some of the mega conventions, like the NAMM convention, Music Merchants, had to move dates for several years. And now, next year, we'll be returning to January where they have their highest numbers. So, they've been about 50 to 60% attendance and so that'll continue to grow. And next year, we're hoping they're back to where they need to be. Natural products, some of the very large shows are nearly at capacity already and so we'll continue to grow that and stack groups so that we can maximize the use of the convention center and all the wonderful hotels we have in the resort district. Our goal next year is 48 and with a stretch goal of 51. We also had 900 self-contained meetings leads that went to all the hotels. So, we don't just fill it with the citywide business. Our goal is to fill it with citywide. The next level is the self-contained business, which is a shorter booking window and then the tourism business and sports business following that. We also booked 90 different sports events and those are mostly amateur sports events that are great for our hotels that come in at need periods. And it's great to have them coming in and continue to grow. You have the next slide and that will show you what happens when a citywide is actually in town. And this is one of our greatest measures to show the benefit for your community when a citywide is at the convention center. The average daily rate goes up to $214 per night and then the night the convention leaves, it drops down to $187. So, you can see when a group is in, the rates are higher. That will continue to grow. The next slide, it shows with occupancy, which again, is an increase when the citywide is in because we're still getting the tourism business, but we're getting the convention business in during that timeframe. And the next slide, and this is just the numbers for January through April of this year. So, we could go back farther if you'd like in the future, but that gives you an idea. And the next slide gives you a RevPAR number, which is revenue per available room, which you can see a great growth there when it is a citywide convention in town as opposed to the day before and the day after. It's not just the convention business, though. And the next slide shows you, we have a lot of different hotel-centric co-op programs where the hotels partner with us and these are all the hotels in Garden Grove that partner with us on these programs. The next slide shows you some of the results of those programs. And a program with Expedia was just a three-month program and the end of '22 booked nearly 15,000 room nights. The Getaway Today, which is the second-largest producer of Disneyland tickets in the world, behind Disneyland, is, was a program with them. They're based out of Utah but sell throughout the western states. Had over 17.6,000 room nights coming in. And then, the next slide with Hotel Beds. This was a program, which was just, it was a six-month program, but again, another 18,000 room nights. And these are just in Garden Grove. So, these are programs that we monitor, we look at, and if they don't produce, we don't continue them in the future. So, this is a great way our tourism sales efforts contribute to the Garden Grove product. Expedia, again, another program we had with them, producing nearly 30,000 room nights and 7.2 million in revenue to the hotels in Garden Grove. Next slide will show you a little bit about all the different programs that are available. We have Garden Grove Hotels in many of these programs, whether it's our international sales missions, which I'll address here in a moment, our familiarization tours. Your hotels are great in participating in that and providing accommodations and really showcasing the destination. The wholesale tour operator events, our trade shows. I came back today from IPW, which is the largest international trade show for visitation to the U.S., which was in Anaheim in 2019. And it was in San Antonio this week and it's back to where it was back in '19. So, it's great to see the international business is back. China business is not. That's the slowest market. Korea and Japan are coming back. Japan is now the number-three international market for our destination because of one such baseball player that I think we know who that is. So, we'd like for you to vote tonight to re-sign him, if you can do that. We also do pro- We also do programs with the Angels. We do something in spring training now where we go in, do media events, do trade events, and really focus on the product that is here in our region. We do things that destination focus or update, which you guys participate in, and we have it many times at your hotels. One of the programs at the next slide, the Getaway Today, you can see that the, the Hyatt Orange County was a big part of that program and are great participants in that, and that is, again, the number-two Disney ticket producer in, in the world for, for Disneyland. One of the other things I'm very excited about on the next slide is through an effort that you have moving forward with the mission into, an economic development mission into Korea, in South Korea, and we, now we've added Japan, but we will coordinate for the team efforts with the tour operators, the travel trade, the members of the media, and we'll be sending a couple of our staff members and funding a large portion of that on the travel trade and really getting the word out about Garden Grove and our destination as a whole to bring travelers back from South Korea and, and Japan. And with that, I like to say that let's make, let's help tourism to help drive economic development, because by showing them all we have to offer, that prompts ideas of new economic development, new things we can do within the destination. So we'll be coordinating that, very excited about that, being included with that. We also have a large, on the next slide, communications plan, large social media plan. If you don't follow that, it's great to see what's going on. We include many items from Garden Grove, whether it's the Steel Craft, whether it's a hotel offering, whether it's a strawberry festival coming up. That's all in our program, as well as our newsletters, which is the next slide on our media relations. Anything about new hotels you have coming up always goes in there. Anything about festivals or new restaurants or product that you have always goes in there and excluded as an overall destination product, so we can all benefit from what each other have going on. So that's, I know I provide a more detailed, longer report each year that I turn in to the city manager's office. And the last slide, give you an idea of kind of where we spend, plan on spending the funds next year. It's a large percentage, obviously, in the marketing and tourism aspect, because that is, is the majority of our marketplace here, but also a large amount of dollars spent in the convention and meeting side to bring up those citywide bookings. We have salespeople, and we have two people in Washington DC, we have two people in Chicago, we have two people in New York, we have two people in the Bay Area, so we have salespeople all around the country, and we place them where the clients are. So they're in there, they're good friends with them, they attend events with them, and they're full-time employees of Visit Anaheim. So that gives you an idea of kind of what our plan is, what some of the results have been. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come in and visit with you. Thank you for your support, and thank you for attending your state-of-the-city event recently, and it's very exciting to see what's going on here. You guys are very progressive in moving forward with the product, and fantastic to see, and we're just glad that you're a great partner with us. So love to answer any questions that you may have, and I also want to thank the, the TID, or the GGTID, and their efforts and support, and there's members of our board who are representing that group, as well as a city representative that the city manager appoints onto our board as well. So with that.
Jay, I just want to say thank you for coming in in person to share this with us. You're a wealth of knowledge in all things tourism and hotel-related, which is the golden goose that feeds our city, and we're very proud of all of our hoteliers and all the good work that we do together with Anaheim in the Disney Resort area. So thanks for taking the time to come in here in person and give us some updates.
Anytime, always available for any questions, and thank you, City Manager, for your great relationship that we have and partnership. And jealous I'm not going on the trip to Korea, but it should be a great effort, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if I may ask Kevin Shay to, General Manager with Marriott Suites, to just highlight some of the GGTID accomplishments and, and just our partnership as we continue to advance this next budget. And Kevin will join us in a bit before staff prepares their recommendations.
I don't have a slideshow like Jay does, though, sorry. How you doing, City Manager? Thank you for inviting me, City Council. We appreciate it. Just wanted to kind of highlight a few things. Obviously, we're getting through the pandemic, and funds were getting a little low, so we had to do a little cup packs. But as Jay mentioned, we are really at 2019 numbers now. So we have some exciting things that the, the board's been working on. A couple of things that have really been our, our priority is, one is landscaping and just kind of the feel of the resort area. And the second, which is the most important thing, is security. So landscaping-wise, the first thing we did, we've, we've brought the budget back that we had in, in 2019, so we can start doing some of the things that, to beautify the area. The bus shelters are a focus for us as well, so we're working on some projects with those. It's also been a while since we've, you know, bitted out our landscaping agreement, so we're in the process of doing that as well. You know, a new set of eyes is always good for, for any area, but definitely the resort area, so we're in the process of that. On the security side, so a couple of things, we just changed in the middle of June, we're changing to a new security company that will give us more coverage for a better price, so we like that. And, you know, the security is the most important thing for the resort district and the, the city, obviously, so we want to make sure that we're, we're well-covered there. One additional thing that, that we started is we actually have Flock cameras. For those of you aren't familiar with those, they're license plate reading cameras that we have throughout the resort district, and it's pretty cool. We've already had, we've only had them for a few months, and we've already had some success stories with, working with Garden Grove PD, and we've been able to, hopefully, the goal is that people start realizing that they're there, and then they stay out of the, out of the resort area. So we've really had some, some success there. And then the third thing is the associate alert devices. So that's, that's one thing that is very important to all the hotels, and we're going to try, our, our goal is to, all the hotels, all 10 hotels, to have the associate alert devices by the end of the year. You know, maybe some of the contracts will be signed, and, you know, depending on how quickly we can get them in, but our, our employees are very important to us, and we want to make sure we get those in very quickly. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So Mayor, City Council, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing this evening, then adopt a resolution confirming the GGTID Advisory Board Report and levying the assessment for GGTID for fiscal year 2023-24. And staff, Jay and Kevin are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so any comments before we open? We'll open the public hearing. I do not have any cards, so anyone wishing to speak specifically on this item.
Mayor and council members, citizens of Garden Grove, I'm Nicholas Dibs, teacher. I want to thank the two gentlemen for what the work they're doing and their teams. Tourism is obviously a major part of our, of our economy. I do want to throw in some ideas related to this. Number one, with Anaheim Union High School District and Garden Grove Unified School District, if we can get the hotels to give priority to having mentoring programs and/or some sort of partnerships with the school districts so that we hire locally first before they go outside. So if that's a possibility, and to give local high school kids maybe some tours and maybe outreach to the schools about careers from the hotels and different things, that would be great. Then, as far as, as far as I, conventions that come in, I do want to call the city's attention to the, two years ago in August of 2021 or so, there was the esports convention at the great, or event at the Great Wolf Lodge. And medical experts and others have said that the esports are contributing to problems with teenagers and young people. Addiction, sleep deprivation, and so on. So I just want to ask the city to do its best to not be, necessarily not to be a cosponsor of it. If they come into town, fine, but it, but the city and the school district should not be encouraging this when it's hurting children. So I just want to bring that to your attention. So thank you all for the wonderful work that's being done. And when I'm, my younger days, I got to work at Disneyland, so I'm very familiar with tourism and, and how important it is to our local economy. And I just want to encourage Jay and Kevin and the city staff and, and the resort district to do what they can to partner with our local schools and have some mentoring programs and outreach and so on. I think it'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmembers, Joe?
Thank you, Kevin and Jay, for your presentation, and I'm, I'm big on tourism. And what you're doing is helping put Garden Grove on the map, and I've had a chance to work with our sister city in Korea, Angang. So I really appreciate any, not just tourism, but friendly relations between cities. And if we can build on that and have more sister city relations with other cities, please explore those opportunities. Also, because you're going to focus on landscape, pretty much playing catch-up since 2019, which kind of set us back, and you've got quite a ways to go before we can vamp back up. But as far as landscape, I'm thinking there's also inside the hotels themselves, not just the outside facade and what's going on outside with landscape, but can we get some wall space for art, gallery, decoration, and so on? I've worked with in the past the Ramada Hotel here on Garden Grove in Brookhurst, and they've, they've used their wall space in the lobby to display local artists' artwork. And I'm thinking, school-age students that have competition for artwork or local artists to kind of give in a local flavor. And also, I don't think it will add to the budget, but if we keep in the back of our mind that it's not just the exterior landscape, but also what people see once, once they're inside a hotel, if we can add the local flavor to it. And I'm big on public art, so please consider that, and that's it. Thank you.
Any other comments or a motion?
Mayor Jones, Mayor Jones, I need to report out for the record.
Oh, please, go ahead.
For the record, Mayor Jones and council members, as of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received zero protest regarding this assessment. There is not a majority protest. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we had a motion, and a... Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, thanks, guys. That'll take us on to items for consideration. We do have two listed, so we'll go to 5A. Bill, take it away.
Good evening. This, item 5A is award of contracts to Wrench Rebel Collision LLC, Caliber Body Works, Inc., doing business as Caliber Collision Centers, and Wilson E. Guzman, doing business as Sharp Auto Body and Paint for auto parts and labor for repair of city vehicles, and Mr. Murray will provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight's city council has asked for award contracts to Wrench Rebel Collision, Caliber Collision Center, and Sharp Auto Body and Paint for repair of city vehicles. The primary vendor will be Wrench Rebel, and the second vendor will be Caliber Collision. Each of these contracts will be for $125,000 each. Sharp Auto Body will be the third vendor and have a contract of 50,000. The vendors will be offered work in the order previously mentioned, and the selection of the vendor will involve the timeliness of the work. Public Works Department is responsible for maintaining the city fleet of vehicles, and these contracts will ensure the vehicles are repaired in a professional manner and in a timely manner. Staff sent specifications of a sample repaired project to the three vendors and received these three bid responses that are shown in your staff report. Staff reviewed the bids and found them all to be responsive. All of the contracts total $300,000, and that's including an existing budget for fleet management, and that will be over the next five years. There is no impact to the general fund, and should council decide to award these contracts this evening, staff can begin, begin using these vendors to repair city vehicles in June of this year. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion? Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5B.
Item 5B is award of contract to Pavement Coatings Company for the 2023 arterial streets slurry seal project number CP1355000, and Mr. Murray will provide that report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council is being asked to award a contract to Pavement Coatings Company to slurry seal various arterial streets in the city. Those street segments are listed in your report. This work will vary for each individual segment, but in general, it includes some of or most of the items that I'm going to be talking about, which is removing and reconstructing failed pavement areas, cold milling, slurry seal and micro-surfacing. In some cases, we will, we will place an asphalt rubber aggregate membrane, short, short term for that is an ARAM. Placement of curb and gutter, sidewalk, driveways, cross gutters, alley aprons, bus pads and wheelchair ramps. So it's basically the concrete work associated with the street where it's needed. We'll do some minor adjustment of utility covers to finish grade. Install catch basin trash screens. We will have CCTVs placed at intersections where we currently don't have them, and those will be tied into our traffic management center. Then we will restore all the traffic signing and striping, pavement markers, and reestablish the survey monuments in the center line. All of this work is to be completed at a cost of almost 7.4.7 million dollars. Staff received and opened two qualifying bids on May 10th of this year, and staff found Pavement Coatings Company to be the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor should begin work in June and should be complete in November. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with general funds, Measure M2 funds, gas tax, and INLU developer fees. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Comment. Just, I, I really am glad to see that the arterial streets are getting some love. Some of these streets are getting pretty bad, but others aren't really in that bad a shape, but we're giving them love so they don't become really bad. But I would like to see some priority into the residential areas, you know, in our districts. I know I've got some areas around, at the park over there and, and like Longden and stuff, the roads are just abysmal. So it'd be nice if we could see some focus on the residential streets that are really getting bad. But with that being said, I, I'm really glad to see this is moving forward. We're getting some infrastructure improvements done as needed, and with that, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it and just say...
Oh, go ahead.
Any comments? Really glad to see some of these smaller streets get attention, specifically Clinton Street. And I know I've been complaining about Harbor where the new hotels coming in, so I'm glad to see that that's also on the list. And just with that, glad to see it happening. Thank you.
Thank you, and we were en route to, or back from Las Vegas, and we got our general review while we were at the airport and otherwise, but thank you, Lisa, for actually filling us in. And I, I'm very enthusiastic about this project, supported fully, and I even got a list of streets that we're going to get serviced, and I want to announce this in my own district. And day four, we have work that will be happening between now and the end of the year at Brookhurst and Trask. From Trask to Garden Grove Boulevard, between Nutwood and Garden Grove Boulevard to Chapman. So on Nutwood from Garden Grove Boulevard to Chapman. On Westminster from Brookhurst to Bowen. They're pretty much, it embraces my district, so I'm very happy about that, because this is a main artery, and this is where a lot of my constituents reside, and they use this, these streets every day. And I also asked that we put up some notices prior to the actual construction, so people know, kind of like we usually do, just as a reminder to properly barricade and notify so that people have enough advance notice that there's going to be work, and it might impact their, their route, their, their traffic. So that's all I would request of your department to do what you always do anyway, and notify.
Thank you, Bill. I just want to thank you for everything you're doing. Obviously, we can do a lot when we have money to do it, so it takes money to do these things. I just wanted to add, if, I appreciate all you've been doing in the city. If we could, if I could get a report back on the, a lot of the alleys, I know in District 2 need a lot of love. If you could update us on the, eventually here on the... need a lot of love. If you could update us on the, eventually here on the schedule of maybe some alleys that could be done, because it really helps when those alleys are paved well. You know, the graffiti kind of goes away. It prevents people from dumping furniture and all those kinds of things. I just want to take a look at our alleys in the city and especially District 2, because I know I have a lot of alleys. And that's where people, they're getting pretty rough. And I appreciate everything you're doing, but I want to get kind of a schedule on what the timeline would be on some of those. But you can get that to me later.
Thank you for all the comments. In general, we select the streets based off a computer program. So this is the best, the computer, the program tells us this is the best way to spend the money. And so we do our best to adhere to that. We do have a plan for the alleys, and I think that, I haven't reviewed our requests for supplementals, but we were asking for a special paver to do that work. And I'm not putting Lisa on the spot or finance. I have no idea if it's been approved, so we'll see. We are well aware of the issue, and you're, we haven't done anything with the alleys since I've been here, to be quite frank. It's been a long, long time.
I know. So I'm not trying to put pressure on you. I just, over the next couple of years, I think we should focus on the alleys a little bit, because I drive down them a lot, and they're pretty rough. And I'm sure it's not just D2. But, and it's not anybody's fault. We just need to focus on it. So, thank you.
Called a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We have none listed. We'll go around the horn, starting with George.
Sure. Well, the obvious elephant in the room, next weekend, or this weekend, the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival. Be there, be square. I really recommend, if you haven't attended a strawberry parade, come on out, bring the family, get everybody up. The parade actually kicks off here at 10:00, so people are usually getting there a little early, a couple hours early to line up and get some good seats and whatnot. So, you know, and then after the parade, enjoy the strawberry festival, strawberry shortcake, and the rides, and the games, and all the events there. So, you know, come on out. The kickoff is actually Friday, right, where they do the cake cutting? And so, Friday night, so come on out Friday night, too, for that matter. And I think that's about all I have. Oh, I'll discuss that next time.
John?
Thanks. Just a quick couple of things. Excited about the strawberry festival this weekend. A lot of activities going on. Quick story, since we were talking about the hotels and the resort area, when NAMM was going on, my wife and I are in Garden Grove Home Depot here at about 8:00 at night, and I turn around in the paint aisle, and there's a YouTuber that I watch. He has a million subscribers, and I know he's from the East Coast. And I look over and I said, Reggie, what are you doing here? And, long story short, you know, he's here for NAMM. I go, how'd you get here? Uber, you know, Garden Grove Hospitality. I said, hey, well, I'll drive you back to your hotel, you know? Because he was saying it would cost him $150 to get from LA to here, right? So I'm like, hey, I can show you a little Garden Grove Hospitality, drive you back to your hotel. Oh, I need, I gotta go to the store, get some comfortable shoes and some other things. I said, I'll take you to a Garden Grove store. We'll get you some shoes. We'll get you some products. He's got his videographer there. My wife is like, you're nuts. And I'm like, this is my guy. I want, you know, we all watch, we have our favorite YouTube channels. He's a street performer, right? And he's, so we give him a ride to the local store. He gets his stuff. We drive him back to the hotel, and he has a great, great time there at NAMM. And he's a street performer. He got some content. And the Anaheim District, he had a little conflict. And the reason I brought this up is there was, he was on a sidewalk performing, and he plays a guitar and can play anything. And then he just asked people that want to sing, can sing. Well, he was in the wrong place, and they asked him to leave that area. And he's a very polite gentleman, and he just moved where he needed to. He called me up the next day that night. He goes, hey, I didn't want to break any rules or anything. I go, hey, just, this is where you need to go. You know, they're just doing that. So, long story short, even though the Anaheim Convention Bureau asked him to relocate, they put him, after NAMM was over, he's on their website as a photo. And it was all, you know, all a good fun, you know, and he actually got content, had a good time, and I drove him to the airport at the end. So show people some love when they're here, because they're shopping at our stores, or staying at our hotels when they're here for these conventions. I know it gets a little rough in the parking sometime in both District 2 and 4. It can get rough, or 5, I'm sorry. But, you know, show people some love. And then the lastly thing, I did have, the District 2 community cleanup was a couple, not last Saturday, but it was Saturday before. And I don't know if I beat anybody, but it was like, I got like four and a half containers full of junk. But that was the last one of the year for Garden Grove. But so if you have any large bulk item pickups between now and the end of the year, before we do more community cleanups, you can call Republic, you know, and they'll come out three times a year and pick up bulk items for you. So please use that resource. And I want to thank city staff and the people that had to come out on a Saturday, and also the people from Republic. They did an outstanding job, and it went really well. So that's it. Thank you.
Cindy?
First, I just want to say thanks to our staff, Pam and David, and whoever are working on the issue that one of our residents mentioned earlier about the A-floor building, the skeleton one. So sometimes when residents come to us and say they have issue with the property manager and things like that, like, I don't know what can we do to help, right? But actually, our staff stepped in and were able to do something that they have to take the action and look into it. So I'm so glad that our resident came here and gave us some feedback, but, you know, it's getting better. So I just want to say thanks to our staff. The second thing is Councilor Chodovin, she mentioned, we just came back from the trip, and it was a great trip. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Thanks to our staff for their professionalism. Greg, Grace, and Monica, and of course, our city manager, Lisa, they were able to take care from A to Z for us. You know, from booking the trip, setting up the booth, and just anything that we need. And we have, I attend five different meetings with our staff, and there were all the meetings, too, back-to-back. Some of the time that we would have half of the team go, you know, to different meetings. And it was a lot of things I could say, but I want to highlight three things. First, everywhere we go, our city was, people recognize our city, and they would just give all the praises and the compliment about the thing that our city had been doing. You know, from all the city, they're actually looking at us and see what we are doing, and just kind of, you know, want to replicate that. So that's awesome to hear. The second thing is that some of the investor actually told us that they would not go anywhere except Garden Grove, and they come back again and again. Another investor was, well, actually, the property owner mentioned that they want to say thanks to our city for, this is actually in District 1, for having a temporary trailer to help with the teacher pre-school, so that way the students could go to school with, you know, the three units that got burned down a couple weeks ago. So it's just amazing feeling. Wherever you go, you always see, hear, and I compliment about our city. And also during the meeting, we, people were asking, okay, we have this lot, and we need, you know, tenant. And then in the next meeting, we have people say, oh, well, we have the people that are looking for a place to rent. And so Lisa and Greg were actually able to give that connection, so you could see the value of having, you know, going to the convention and making that connection, so that way we help our city in terms of, you know, making things happen. And I was just impressed with everything, and thank you to our staff again. And thanks to our councilmember, Chodovin, and the mayor, just tag along, and just amazing experience for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you. I would also like to report on our very recent trip. In fact, we just touched down about four hours ago. And we spent a whole full day Monday there, as well as part of Tuesday. So first of all, thank you for my colleagues who are sending us there and allowing us the opportunity to go learn and represent the city. The reason why there's only three of us, Mayor, myself, and Cindy Tran, is because we can't all seven go because of the Brown Act. So it's very generous of you to allow me to go this time. And we do have a lot to report, but I don't want to write the book on it, as the mayor would say. But there's some very important things I'd like to highlight. One is that this event is so important, very, very important. I've heard it from Deenang Wen, my spouse, who was on council before me a couple terms ago, and she's been there multiple times. But I had no idea what it was like, and I was very inexperienced. But once I was there, I see how important it was that we have to be, have a presence there every year. And our booths is, they kind of divided up into like city blocks, and we're on 32nd and K Street, and it's prime location. We are the envy of a lot of cities who want to be in that exact spot, because it's like a corner where everybody, all the traffic will stop by us. And so we catch a lot of visitors there. And it's really important, because we are in an area where there are like two dozens other cities, and they have their booth there. And we have the visibility, and we have the continuity. We've been there for a long time. And I spend half the day walking throughout the whole space, which is like more than 3,000 different booths. I got a congratulations on my, I watched that I beat my own record. It was a personal record as far as activity. I've had that watch for over two years, and I, wow, I was like, this is a personal record. So I walk like more than a week's worth of walking in one day, so I congratulate myself. But that's because there's a lot of ground to cover. A lot of people to see. I saw people with their booths in Dana Point, Anaheim, Fountain Valley. Just any of the number of cities in our area, they all have representation there, and they all have their own interests. And there's some friendly competition, but there's also cooperation. We point them to, we try to get people to invest and develop in our city. But also, if our city doesn't have the developer's base, we would refer to other cities in our locality, too. So that kind of symbiotic relationship, not just a partnership with other cities and the developers, but we get to know people on a personal basis. And this is where I found true appreciation for our staff, like Greg Blodgett, who's, he's amazing when he's out there and he's talking to developers, he's talking to realtors, he's talking to our partners that are already in our city, and their businesses is providing us with revenue. You know, we vote on all these things, and we're spending millions of dollars. Like tonight, we voted on a $4, $5 million project. Well, where that fund comes from has to come from somewhere. And those are, the businesses in our town, the Buy-in Garden Grove program that has brought in revenue, sales tax, Measure O, this is what pays for our projects and developing, development in our city. So it's to meet the people behind it and to know that they're real families. I never heard that. I never got to meet the people who represent these families that are in our city, that's contributing to our revenue stream, that's making all these things happen. I've never seen that. So that kind of opportunity is invaluable, and I highly recommend any of a number of our citizens to turn out for that. Lastly, I want to mention Monica Coverubias, who was on my show just this week, with Face. I interviewed several staffs already, and she talked about the We Care and the Garden Grove Boost Program. And that's starting towards the end of June, and the application process, and it starts July 1st. So I want to put the word out that we have the funding from HUD, Housing Urban Development Authority, federal funding to provide services for in-home daycares, for families who run in-home daycares, to service our families, working families. And you know what the numbers are? For every service provider, there's 23 to 27 child that needs childcare, one to every 20-something. That's how needy we are. And so these programs can support up to 17 different in-home daycare centers, where they get the training, the licensing, and all sorts of support. So I suggest people get on our website and get in touch with Monica to start applying for the We Care and GG Boost program that is in collaboration with the HUD funding to provide these services. Please get in touch with our city staff for that. That's all I have to say tonight. And only one last thing as to the ICSC, their mission statement or their slogan this year is "Community, Commerce, and Culture." So I see how those things go together. It's not just commerce. It's not all about commerce. It's about community and culture, too. So that's my takeaway from the ICSC, and thank you for the time to report.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone that participated in the GG Gems. The voting has closed, and so soon we'll know who the winners are of that home beautification award. I really just appreciate everybody participating in that and voting. And again, I'm really excited to see who the winners are and see what beautiful homes we get to take away those top prizes. Also, quickly, vector control update. It's going to be a really buggy summer. That's not necessarily the happiest of updates. But after all the rain and everything, they're basically saying that mosquitoes are going to be out in full force. So just remember to dump and drain water, and also clean out weeds and any just plant coverage that maybe has been overgrown in and around your property, not just because of the bugs and mosquitoes, but also rats. So just a quick update there. And then finally, my colleagues mentioned the strawberry festival. I'm really excited about that. Parade Day is this Saturday, and you will definitely see me around the fairgrounds eating something, most likely. Strawberryfestival.org has the full list and the full rundown of all the events throughout the weekend. Thank you.
Sorry, I would be amiss if I didn't make this announcement, because I made a promise to John from the Veteran Housing, Veteran Housing. We got a flyer from our city manager announcing that everybody that had furniture to donate to the veteran housing. I called them up. The phone number is 916-916-470-3914. 916-470-3914. John is a veteran and retired realtor. He's a volunteer board member of a nonprofit that helps veterans provide housing to veterans. And they have picked up a couple of houses that they need to furnish out. And I called them. They came the very next morning with a couple of very capable men to pick up two of my sofas. They were leather sofas I had for many years, but Dina wanted to change them out and redesign the whole living room. So they came and picked it right up, and it's very heavy. And it's not a one or two-man team that lifted, but these guys were volunteers who had the strength and also the goodwill to pick up these furnitures. So if you have items to donate, please call John, 916-470-3914. He'll answer your phone and schedule out for a pickup. And they would really be happy if you have some items to donate. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go next. Two things for me. One is just ICSC. Huge thanks and recognition to Grace Lee, Monica Coverubias, Greg Blodgett, Lisa Kim, of course, and others involved. So much logistics that goes into planning and preparation for attending that conference and having a big booth there. It's been very productive for us over the years. I've been probably 15 times or something on behalf of the city. It's always exhausting and hectic. And also, I just, I think it's great that Joe and Cindy were able to attend for the first time this year, just to kind of experience firsthand a tiny little glimpse of just how hardworking, how smart, how diligent our staff is in our economic development efforts. What they got to soak up is that, you know, we pack days full of meetings there, and those are the kind of connections that our staff has all day, every day throughout the year, frankly, with our property owners, developers, retailers, whatnot. Just exploring opportunities for what they're doing with their properties, what's going to happen with that vacant space, how's it going with the neighboring property owner, all those sort of things, and just digging into the weeds on looking for any opportunities to keep vacancies down and just keep turning over stones towards finding new things. So I'm glad you guys got to get a glimpse of that. Second thing is just, tonight was, earlier tonight was our 2023 graduates reception. In our 10th year, I'm really excited to see that we celebrated over 70 college graduates in Garden Grove this year. Started out 10 years ago, and I think we had four, and it's just grown. And that's an opportunity for us to reach out and recognize college graduates, and then encourage them to stay in the city, get involved in the city. Now you've got that college degree, stay here, keep Garden Grove your home, make a family here, a career here, and get involved with the city. Get on a commission, get on council, get on whatever. It's, we're creating kind of a bench of educated and creative young talent coming up through the chain. So I want to acknowledge that. City manager, Lisa Kim?
Mayor and council, and definitely it's been a full 48 hours for our team. And the next and, uh, the next stage of ICSC is the actual follow-up. There has been over 100 touchpoints, and you'll know, your Office of Economic Development staff will be touching base with the brokers, the developers, property owners, and our retailers that we're open for business, so that's all I have.
General counsel, do we have a need for closed session?
Mayor, we do have a closed session item tonight, um, and it's, uh, real property negotiations for property located at 12966 Euclid Street. Um, and so after the regular meeting, we can go into closed session.
Okay, with that, we will stop our regular meeting, and we will adjourn over to closed session. Thank you.